I'd like to welcome everybody to our meeting tonight, especially Nate, who I absolutely messed up about last meeting. So Nate, if you would please do us the pleasure of leading us in prayer.
Yes. Father, I do thank you. Thank you for the privilege to live where we do. Thank you because it's a quiet and peaceful city. And thank you for the community that we have. And I'm thankful for these who have taken on the role of leading that city. So please give them your help to do this job. And we continue to have a quiet and peaceful place to live. Pray this in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Nate. It's now seven o'clock, so I'll call our meeting to order and invite you all to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Shirley, would you take roll call, please?
Mary, here. Larry Lambert.
Here.
Mike Conno, Bob Porter.
Here.
Mindy Galbey.
Here.
Kamal Ghazi.
Here.
Kristen Bebo.
Here.
And Vanessa.
Looking now for approval of our agenda for tonight.
I move that we adopt the agenda as presented.
We have a motion from Kamal, I'm looking for a second.
Second.
We have a motion from Kamal, seconded by Kristen. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. And now looking for approval of our council meeting minutes from October 2nd.
I move that we suspend the rules, waive the reading, and approve the minutes from the October 2nd, 2025 regular meeting.
Second.
We have a motion from Larry, seconded by Kamal. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Do we have any pre-approved reports tonight that I'm not aware of? I'm not aware of any. Shirley, are you aware of any? Okay, so we'll move on past that into public comment. Is anyone here to make public comment? You're welcome to. Bless you. Hearing none, we'll move into communications, Shirley.
So just the first thing, as I did cast out the planning commission minutes from their meeting on the 6th of October. Their old business item two is what we'll want to look at and discuss probably at the next meeting, is for the North Street situation that's going on right now. And there's a few, a couple items. The last farmer's market at McQueen House is October 18th, which is Saturday from 9:00 to noon. The fire department is holding a fire prevention family fun day on Sunday, October 19th, from 2:00 to 5:00. And they'll have demonstrations and what, donuts it says, and face painting and other items like that. So it's behind the fire station. Recycling news, there's a pamphlet up out by the door. Looks like they have a recycling event on Tuesday, October 21st, and Saturday, October 25th in Langsberg. And then, you want other pamphlets? Sorry, it's a lot.
That's okay.
So remember Mr. Miller, who came and wanted to do an event in the town? So he finally got back with me. He has been working on getting, like, his ducks in a row, I guess. He's working with a gentleman who is the head of the Langsberg Lines Club. And the Lines Club hosts that event in Langsberg. So he's helping him. They're looking to try to have the carnival, that's what he wants to have, on February 28th through 31st of this next May. And, can I say February?
You do.
Yeah.
Yeah.
May, not February. Why do I do that? I don't know, but yes, May. So May 28th through May 31st. And they are looking to, he just has a lot of different ideas. So it's just something that he's going to have to pull together. They're tentatively thinking next door to the grocery store in that empty lot. He has spoke with the grocery store. He's thinking across the street on the school grounds to have like, maybe craft vendor, a vendor row or farmer's market or something like that. Kind of talking to Charlie's and talking to the VFW. So he's like trying to include a lot of, a lot of moving parts. So that's just kind of in the works, so.
That's in Langsberg or in Perry?
It would be here.
Here.
They've done it in Langsberg for many years. And so he's asked this gentleman just to help him get rolling.
So they've done the Langsberg festivals for, yeah, lots of years. And the Lines Club is the one that heads that, organizes that. And I did call Langsberg to ask them good advice. They just said they come to their meeting and say, we're doing it this weekend. And that's just what they do.
And they just do it?
They just do it. So no permits, no nothing like that in Langsberg. So it's just something that's happened for so long, it's just expected, I guess.
Veterans Day Parade, are you going to talk about that?
Yes, the Veterans Day Parade. Get some more of my notes down here. Veterans Day Parade is Thursday, November 11th at 5:00 p.m. Lineup is on Keene Street and will end at the fire station. And they'll have a small ceremony. Let's see, what else? The fall cleanup, we used two dumpsters. And I think that they were full. I think that's what Jen said. So that's, that is, that's it.
Good. Veterans Day Parade was not scheduled to be here this year. It's not our year to do it because it's on a rotation basis. But VFW commander, whose name escapes me at the moment, Rogers, Mike Rogers, there. He called and said, we have a dilemma. The city that was scheduled to do it is not able to do it. Would you? I said, well, if you would like to have the parade, I'll put you in touch with the police chief because he's the one who issues a permit. And so that's what I did. And Kyle said, yes, we can put that together and be proud to do that. And I think that probably has a lot to do with the fact that Kyle's son is a Marine now. So we are going to do it here. I say we, it will be here. The VFW will put it together. They have a little ceremony they do down behind the fire station when the parade's over. And so that should be a good time to have it because it's still light out then. We tried having it at seven o'clock once and you couldn't see anything, any of the floats or anything. So then we had it at five o'clock the next time it was our turn and it was much better. So that's what we'll do this time. And as far as the event that Mr. Miller, that that group wants to do sometime in the future, May, February, whenever it is.
Not this year.
We had discussed the possibility of putting together a permit of some kind so that we have record of what they're planning to do, where they're planning to be, what's going to be happening there. And so we need to move ahead and get a committee together so that that application for a permit or that permit can be developed. So I'm looking for anybody that's willing to serve on that with Shirley and Kyle.
I would like to be a part of that.
You would? Okay, there you go, Shirley, if you want to.
Yep.
So the police chief, the clerk, Kamal representing council. Who else do you need? John, yes, DPW.
John and Trent.
Will that do?
Yep.
Okay.
I think that's fine because Kyle and Trent and John, I mean, they are going to know what extras.
Trent, and you may want to have him bring Dan Monroe, she's available.
Oh, okay.
He's the chief or assistant chief of EMS, so.
Yep.
Okay. Good idea.
Yeah, and I had already asked after Mr. Miller came in if he would be interested or how he felt about it. And he said he thought it was a great thing. And yes, he wanted to be on it. And then he's like, you know, if they have food trucks, the health department, you know. So there's a lot of things that I didn't even think of. So I kind of already have a permit going, it's just going to be adding onto it, taking stuff away, I don't know, you know. So we don't want to start from scratch, at least.
So you'll schedule that meeting and then let us know when you have it all together. Very good. Do we have any committee reports tonight? Anyone? No committee reports, looking then for presentation and approval of the bills.
I move that we approve the bills as presented and independently authorized.
We have a motion from Kamal, seconded by Bob. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. We don't have any old business, so we'll move right into new business. The first item is our some appointments. We had a few openings this month of October for various positions. And the first one I'd like to make recommendation to reappoint is Jeff Codet, the owner of the hardware here in town. He is serving on the pension committee. And his new reappointment would be a term expiring October 2027. I did talk to his wife, who talked to him, who said, yes, he will. So looking for a motion concerning that appointment.
I move that we accept the mayor's recommendation and reappointment of Jeff Codet to the pension committee with a term expiring October 1st, 2027.
Second.
We have a motion from Larry, seconded by Kamal. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. And I welcome Wayne and Roseanne Tora, who I called on the phone. But this time I talked to Wayne, who talked to Roseanne, who talked. But Wayne has agreed to serve as our second representative to the SADA board. The lady who served on it before, Mrs. Wood. Shirley, is that it?
No, Sharon.
Sharon, I'm sorry. Sharon Wood. She did not want to be reappointed because now she's the head of the food bank. So we had that opening. And I contacted Wayne and Roseanne. And Wayne said he would happily do that. So thank you for that.
Well, thank you for thinking of me.
Yes, absolutely. And I would like to recommend appointment for Wayne to the SADA board with a term expiring October 28th. Looking for council approval.
I move that we accept the mayor's recommendation and appoint Wayne Tora to the SADA board with a term expiring October 2028.
Thank you very much.
We have a motion from Mindy, seconded by Bob. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Shirley's going to swear Wayne in because this is a new appointment for him.
I do solemnly swear that I will support
I do solemnly swear that I will support
the Constitution of the United States of America
the Constitution of the United States of America
the Constitution of the State of Michigan
the Constitution of the State of Michigan
the Charter and Ordinances
the Charter and Ordinances
of the City of Perry
of the City of Perry
and that I will faithfully perform
and I will faithfully perform
the duties as SADA board member
as duties of SADA board member
according to the best of my ability
according to the best of my
so help me God
so help me God.
Thank you very much, Wayne. We appreciate you.
Thank you.
We have one more appointment, and that's in regard to a reappointment of James Hubert to the Local Officers Compensation Committee with a term expiring October 30th. And I talked actually directly to him. And he agreed to reappointment. So looking for that acceptance from the council.
I move that we accept the mayor's recommendation to reappoint James Hubert to the Local Officers Compensation Committee with a term expiring in October 2030.
We have a motion from Bob, seconded by Mindy. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Thank you for those. I think that brings our committee roster up to date for a little while, anyway. Moving into our next item of new business, it is a proposal that we've received from the company who now leases our tower over here by the DPW building. They've leased it for many, many years. And they had written a letter proposing to purchase the site so it would be a one-time dollar amount paid and then they would own it. They have offered to do this a couple of times in past years. And it has always been rejected and so the lease just continued. But each time the lease terminates, then it's renegotiated for a new amount.
What was it effective for?
They just, the council at that time felt it was better, my understanding, and Shirley, correct me if I'm wrong, but when we looked up the minutes from those meetings, it was indicated that it was their thought to continue the income stream as opposed to just a one-time payout.
And I would have said that has been fruitful, so.
Well, it continues to be. I mean, it's a contract, so. I think it's $27,000 a month that they pay.
No, no.
That's $50,000.
They pay, they pay.
Do you have a hundred?
They pay a little, like, $3,500 a month or something like that.
Yeah, the annual is.
Yeah, okay, I think you're right.
But by 2034, we will, you know, it looks like that would be the cumulative of that one-time.
Yeah, right, of course, yes. It would take about 10 years of the current, anyway, lease amounts being paid for us to reach the amount that they're offering to purchase it for. Assuming, of course, that they continue to have need for the tower.
What are they renting?
I mean, there are hundreds, if not thousands, of satellites circling the earth.
That's true.
Providing alternate ways for, you know, communication to happen without having a tower underground. And who knows? I mean, we don't know. That may continue for 50 more years or it might continue for five more years. You know, we just don't know. But if they don't need it, then once their contract is done or they contact us and say, we want to, we want to give you some money and leave, you know.
You just signed that new contract, I don't know, a couple, three years ago?
Yeah.
What was the duration of that? Was it 10 years?
10 years, I think, yeah.
Can I say one thing?
Yes.
So Megan reached out to her treasures group and she just asked the question, if anybody deals with us. And once somebody answered her back and said that they have multiple tower leases. They are constantly always asking them to take a lump sum buyout. She always says no. And she says right now that they're, she just says what they're getting from their, from their three tower leases per month. And she just says when they, all contracts have an increase. Two out of the three are in their water tanks. So if they abandon it, it's no big deal. But she said, there's always someone willing to use the space. And she always uses that as a negotiating tool, so.
What are they, what would they be purchasing? Because we don't own the tower, right? It's not our tower. We own the property that it sits on.
Correct, yes. They'd be purchasing the property that it's on.
They're not purchasing the property, if I understand. They're purchasing an easement to
Right, to then ease it, to get to it.
Still, still sitting property, but propose a lifetime easement.
And in the lease itself, it does give the easement
Correct.
to get to it whenever they need to, so.
And then if we owned it, we would have had them put the
The emergency thing on it, you're absolutely right.
And they weren't very helpful when Kyle reached out to them.
They were not.
If I remember right.
No. I did get an email from a local attorney, whose name I won't use, who accidentally was sent this proposal. And so he sent me an email and said, if the council decides to look into this further, I do know an attorney who's had a number of dealings with these types of leases who would be happy to negotiate on the city's behalf. So it sounds to me like that attorney was saying, I think you could get more with a negotiator, you know, acting on your behalf and negotiating that. And I mention that because, yes, it's a continued income stream for as long as they continue to have the lease. And yes, we could always get someone else to populate the tower if they do bow out at any point. And populate the tower for what? I don't know. Because of all the communications are done through space satellites, I personally don't have enough knowledge of those things to know who else would use the tower. But, that being said, I would like us to not make a decision tonight but continue to give this some thought based on all the information being put out there. Because we have, as a city, had numerous discussions about things that we'd like to do to better our city, like sidewalks, like developing our other well site. And the amount that they're offering, or if that attorney can negotiate a higher sale price, that would go a long ways to being either matching money for a grant or a down payment on a loan for any types of improvements in the city. I would say, why haven't we done sidewalk improvements in the city? Why ever? Because we haven't, maybe one here, one there. But why haven't we done that? Why haven't we repaired the ones that need repair? Because we don't have the money to do it. I would just like us to consider that.
I would have to, I agree, I think you should stable it, but we'd have to assess the yearly income we get from it because
Megan did do that.
Does that, does that
Yeah, that's what I'm doing there. So again, I would have said, yeah, you wouldn't have more time to read all that.
And figure it out, but I understand.
It's about a 10-year.
Break even is nine years from now.
Yeah, break even is nine years.
I think it needs to be more than that. My concern is, and Sue mentioned it, I'm not smart enough technology-wise, but if we just think in the last 10, 15 years, what's happened with communications and technology? And possibly going to be obsolete in another 10 or 15 years.
Sure could, but they shut down analog radio.
Yeah.
And it took them a while to get rid of it and then they just removed it, the cellular. So it's possible. I, my crystal ball's broken, so I can't tell you. But my point was going to be, or make, was the new budget from the state. I heard that they may reduce, be reducing what sharing to communities are. So our budget may be have a little bit of a hit from that coming up that we don't know exactly because they just passed it a couple weeks ago.
Yeah.
So I think we need to think about this and evaluate it all, but, you know, we may want to. Your ideas are great. If we have some who can fix those things, which I am all for, but is that going to put a big or hole in our budget that we can't plug?
Well, just keep in mind that we do or will be receiving money from the state for the marijuana for the town.
Correct.
And that is, that is more.
Historically, it has been more than
than what we're
than what we're talking about, you know, annually.
Unless that new 24% tax they put. I hate to be the, you know,
The crystal ball turned red.
The throw of the cold water on it, but there's, there's too many, right now, there's too many little things that we don't know.
Exactly.
But you know what? There's always too many little things that we don't, there will always be
Always, yes, absolutely.
So as a council, it's a difficult decision to make. I mean, you're, you're looking at some pretty big things, especially the well. I mean, we have a well that's got, it's in trouble.
Yes.
And we need to do something with that new site because eventually, not, not, is it going to, but when is it going to?
When, yes, it's not if, it's when.
Yeah, so, I mean, that just may be where that money would need to go. And, I mean, that would make sense anyway because the property's in the DPW area. So then it would keep the money in that same ballpark, if you will. I'm just saying, we're always saying we don't have the money to do matching funds. We don't have down payment or whatever. I think we need to think about that.
How did they come up with that number they're offering us?
Oh, they're, I don't know. Who knows?
Yeah, we don't know.
It's, it's a very unique number.
The last time
Extremely specific.
The last time they made an offer, it was $125,000, maybe, or something like that. And that was maybe three years ago.
Well, I feel like, well, Jan says he feels like it was in 2012.
Yeah, 230,000.
It was after I became mayor and I didn't become mayor until 2020.
Oh, in 2012. Yeah, the date, I'm not really quite sure. I did see a couple different offers.
Yeah.
But I just don't know the dates.
Yeah, and they've made offers every few years. They make an offer and say
937, the bottom, the last three numbers stay. Like, why 37?
Yeah.
Like, why, why not 900? Why not add an extra 1,000? Like, that number is extremely specific.
Yeah.
It's really dark, I know.
I don't like that dark.
Yeah, that's the word I'm saying.
And maybe, Kamal, if you look at what the lease payments are, you would see that. I mean, I just, because Megan did a very nice representation of the current rent payments. She says it's just shy of $29,600. But I think it's something we really need to, each of us dig into, get very familiar with what those numbers are, what the options are, and then take a vote. Shirley's talked with our attorney and he's given her some guidance in regards to these resolutions. And we can just hang on to them if you're all willing to dig in and talk more about it and possibly hold a vote at the next meeting.
I think at a minimum, we should look at, look at Megan's numbers, but at least go for 15 years, which gets us out by $550,000. If they're willing to come in with the offer that they've made, they have some desire to get a lifetime lease of your easement. to get a lifetime lease of your easement.
Yeah, they probably have internal numbers that say, this market's gonna do, we project this market to do this in this amount of time.
Yeah.
And the other option we would have is to open up negotiations by engaging an attorney to negotiate on our behalf, to see what could be achieved. If it can't be a number that we can live with, then we would, you know, go back to the lease and renegotiate and release, is my thought, certainly up to you guys.
I move that we table the American Turner proposal until next meeting.
We have that motion from Kamal, are you looking for a second? Sorry, second. We have a second from Bob. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. So the motion to table passes. So please, please do take the time to really dig into that stuff and get very familiar with, think about what our options are, I mean, you, you'll probably come up with way more things than I have.
And we do have a file upstairs, you guys are welcome to come and look at that upstairs. I have a contract file on there, okay?
Very good, thank you. Moving on in our new business agenda, the resolution regarding trick or treat. There was a little confusion about the proposal.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't read it clear enough.
No, that's okay, I wasn't gonna mention your name. I wasn't gonna, I wasn't gonna point you out. But, but, just to clarify, in case there was confusion, our attorney gave us information that the times should be between the hours of five P M. and nine P M., not indicating that we should set our hours for those hours, five to nine, but somewhere between five and nine. So, the resolution that we would make tonight is the one that assigns the mayor the authority to each year designate when Halloween trick or treating will be, so that it doesn't have to come back to council every year and so on, when it's pretty much the same thing, year after year. So, any discussion regarding the resolution establishing Halloween trick or treat policy?
How was the five to nine established? I understand that's a window you can operate within.
Correct.
I don't really know.
I don't, yeah.
Justin wrote this, so I don't really know, I'm just assuming it's just a standard of.
Yeah, I don't know if he pulled it from a county or, or an average or a state thing that says, I don't know. It came from Justin.
My personal view says it probably shouldn't go much past eight o'clock.
Oh yeah, I definitely agree with that.
So, my question, you know, my question to council would be, should we, if we've got the luxury to do it, say that we're between the hours of five and eight? That allows us to start, trick or treat to start early for little kids at daylight and?
If this resolution is passed, the mayor will say, well, trick or treat from six to eight. We're not asking the council to set the hours tonight, we're asking the council to delegate authority to the mayor to do that every year.
I understand.
Okay.
Just questioning whether we should have for a future mayor, guidelines.
A guideline?
Yeah.
The only thing I have problem with five is that, and I speak for personal, because I don't work, I don't live, I live here, but I don't work here. Not many people get home before five, six o'clock, five thirty-six, so it's hard to get home, get, now, if you have kids in school, then that's different, they're picking them up, but I see lots of people picking up, because I live or pastor in the daycare, will ask key kids when I pull in my driveway, so, you know, that's five thirty-six.
I, I think the time that I recall being the most common, if it hasn't been the time every year, has been six to eight.
Six to eight has been since I.
So I see no reason to change it.
Yeah.
You know.
And they push it, especially the older kids push it, I've had people come knocking on my door at eight thirty, turn all the lights off, and they still go and knock on the door. So, you're gonna, if you make it later, then those, they'll push the envelope later, kind of like the speed limit, well, it's forty-five, I can go fifty.
Yeah, but I'll leave my light on till nine. Yeah, the, the older kids wanna scrape up whatever is left, love that.
There is no reason that we could not, before passing a resolution, make a change to it and pass it with the change. So if you're more comfortable with saying, the hours shall fall between six and eight P M., then there's no confusion, there's no doubt about when it is and when it stops, and I'm fine with that. If you all wanna do that, we can just change it to six to eight P M.
I don't feel like it's necessary.
It's okay. Yeah, we can, we can do it, then there's no doubt, I, you know, because it'll be a different council in four years, it'll be, you know, it'll be a different set of people, and someone might read into that, that you have to do it between five and nine, you know.
Well, I think that's what it's saying, is that you have to do it between five and nine o'clock, you can't start it at four o'clock, and you can't have it past nine o'clock. So, I think it's just that guideline of saying.
And it is.
These are, yeah.
I'm just saying, a future council though might say, this is saying that you have to have it from six to eight, they won't look at it as a guideline.
Yeah, that's, that's.
They'll see it as a stipulation.
Right.
So, if we wanna stipulate, six to eight, let's just do it.
I don't think we should. I think they'll just give people more ammunition to say, well, they're all telling us what to do. We can only go trick or treating at six to eight.
I disagree, because they, they'll, everyone's gonna push the limit. They'll come up, it's earlier, we have, it seems like they picked up again last year more kids, but we've been dwindling the last few years. But if we set a time, and then, I know, I'm always from, you know, my, where I lived before, it was a small town, not much bigger, not much smaller than this, but, so, it was very rural, and this town, it was just a town, it wasn't a city. Would collect candy, so everyone lived in the area, Brandon Township, people would go to the city, donate candy, hand it out to the residents of the city or the town, and then you had hours from whatever it was, six to eight, I can't remember, I think it was, I think it was actually last, I think it was like six to seven thirty. Fire hall would blow the horn, you start trick or treating, fire hall would blow the horn and it stopped.
Oh, Lord.
And then the rec department had, after a few years, had a party afterward, bonfire, community bonfire. So you had hot dogs and hot chocolate or cider or, no, whatever, he, he organized that and lots of people went to it.
Sounds fun, but.
It pulled the, you know, you know, candy's getting more and more expensive, so.
I just don't have any problem with like a, you know, fifteen, sixteen-year-old kids coming up, running up, trying to hit as many houses as they can, and eight forty-five or whatever, you know, eh, there you go, here's what I got left, it's less I'll have to end up eating. And I even see, I'm like, hey, all right, you bet, you're to lease twice now. All right, here you go.
They're still gonna come up, even if you say, time ended at eight o'clock. And, and, I'm serious, I'm not, you know, making it up, they, I turned all the lights off, and then I, trick or treat, it's like, really, okay, hold on, I got a little bit left here, so. Now, maybe because I decorate so much around my house, I don't know, but it's, they do come, and I don't care how old you are, it's whatever, it's, it's not the numerical age of your, or number of your age, it's whatever you feel like.
How many trick or treaters do you think you get? Just curious.
About a hundred to a hundred and fifty. I think one year we got more, but the last couple of years have been about a hundred.
That's what Larry said, right? Is that what you told him, around a hundred?
Yeah, that's roughly.
It's grown over the last few, it's, but the population over Imperial Lakes has gone up too.
Right.
More houses and stuff.
And it's, not everybody travels everywhere, right?
Exactly.
So, and now I have more and more people, newer people on my street, and it looks like they're decorating, maybe they'll hand out candy, we didn't have, you know, there was, for a couple of years, we were the only house handing out candy.
Yeah, yeah.
So, that's part of it. I would, personally, I think we should just set a time, this is the time that we do. I don't have a problem with giving the mayor, whichever, whoever is the mayor at the time, the authority to say, we're gonna do it on this day, I just think we should set a time. But you don't have to think that somebody could come in or you misread it like I did, it's, oh my gosh, we're gonna do it from five to nine, that's way too much.
I wasn't gonna mention your name.
It's fine, I owe my mistakes, that's fine.
I'd be inclined to say we make it five to eight. The reason I still say five, recognizing your point, Bob, that there may be some people that aren't home to hand out candy, but the other hand says that if you've got some little kids that you really don't want out, or after dark, whatever, they can get started a little early.
That's true, but I do have, I can tell you, I've had people in strollers, you know, kids, their parents push them in the stroller, and they push them up to the thing and, boom, you know, the, their sibling will come up with an extra bucket and give candy for them.
It doesn't, it doesn't procreate from coming.
But part of, part of Halloween tradition, and, and the roots of it, you know, it's that spookiness, right? And then part of that is the dark, that's one reason I don't clean up the leaves in my frayer, because it's part of the, to me, it's part of the whole fall and that atmosphere, so.
Yeah, I can believe their way with the start time, I just personally like to see us leaving latitude to be nine, because then we're still gonna be coming at nine thirty, whatever.
Yeah, they will, I.
Kamal, what do you think?
Last time, well, one of the things that I really loved about Paris, I missed it first year, I lived here, second year I came, the entire streets were closed off, and we were trick or treating everywhere. I was with my kid, and it was so much fun. It's the one thing that really changed my view about Paris. I don't care about the time, I don't know why we have to set rules, 'cause like, do it, and like appropriately from six to eight, or six to nine, or whatever it is that, that, but I feel like people know, like, people like.
Yeah.
Around our neighborhood, I think, I mean, we keep like a dish of candy for kids, and they can come and take it, and we're trick or treating with them.
It's, it's not different. Council, past councils since the fifties.
Yeah.
Have established when trick or treating.
Really?
Yeah.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, it's, it is decided on by council every year, Halloween day, or when it's been on Sunday, sometimes they've actually changed the day, moved it back to Saturday or moved it up to the next day. Not that I'm saying that's good or bad, but it has happened, so it's a tradition.
It's a.
It's not new, it's not different.
I don't mind delegating it to the mayor, the mayor should be able to set these times, it's, I don't know if it's, I, I, it's, it doesn't matter, it's, it's not something that needs council approval for, for hours of trick or treating.
Right, and that was, that was behind.
Right, I just.
The change, yeah. Mindy, comments? Any input?
Six to eight.
What do you think, Kristen? Oh, you don't have, we need to do set.
I don't know, every meeting, times. I guess it comes something, as, as a mother, when I took my kids out, like, I was unaware of whatever times were in any city I ever went to, I, it's kind of something, when they're little, you go earlier and get them in earlier, and. But I'm not, although I used to drag those kids out, come on, when I was a kid, I hit every house in this neighborhood, what I can't do, come on.
The difference when I was a kid is, we waited till it got dark, and then we had to be home by whatever time, whatever time mom and dad said, you've gotta be home, and we, I don't live in a city, I lived in, it was subdivisions, but it was, we hit, we filled pillowcases.
Pillowcases, yeah, exactly. I ended up carrying them for the kids, because they cried, but we hit every house in any neighborhood.
There are several churches, a couple churches in the V F W. that do truck or treat. So, we, we see people parking in the grocery store parking lot and then walking across to the V F W., doing their truck or treat, going back to the car, and then they drive away probably to the Nazarene Church, who does the same thing. So that, that has become quite popular, but I think for the most part, they go to neighborhoods where the houses are close together.
Absolutely.
And subdivision where they can just walk in the circle and hit a bar, then. So I think it is respectful to at least say, let's be done by eight o'clock. As far as starting, we can say you can start at five, and feel free to trick or treat between five and eight, but out of respect for the people, let's be done by eight o'clock.
I also look at the first.
Yes, I do too.
Regardless of what day.
Whatever it is, that's, that's all.
Well, the name Halloween comes from All Hallows' Eve, because November first is All Saints' Day. So, I mean, that's where it comes from, so if you change the day, it's like, that's not right, but anyway.
The, the thing about nine is, let's say like later, you never know, if like global warming changes or anything changes and somehow the sun stays like till ten, well, I've no idea. It gives the mayor that flexibility, you, she has a window that she's operating with, and they don't have to revisit it again. Not necessarily the mayor will say, oh, every time it'll be at nine P M., she can still say it at eight, but she has that layaway hour. That's, five to nine is not bad, I, I, I'm okay with five to nine.
I think most people are in by then.
It's not saying that you're gonna go till nine, it's.
No, it's still, it's given an hour to you.
Next year, mayor will, mayor will go trick or treat October, October thirty-first, six to eight P M.
Yeah, I'll still be here then, Bob, we'll see after that.
Well, that's, that's what I mean, this is just a.
It's just a framework.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, it's, it's.
Okay.
Well, you don't even have to do it if you don't want to, right?
Yeah, no, I.
You don't wanna do it, you guys wanna keep voting, you know, and there.
Yeah, and it's up to you, if you wanna still bring it to council, we can continue to still bring it to council too, we don't have to do this, whatever your preference is, council.
I don't think it's something we need to like discuss and say, I don't, really, the mayor is here, she can definitely do that decision, doesn't need micromanaging. Giving her the five to nine, you're giving her time, she can set it however she wants to, so, I'm okay with it as it reads, as it says, I don't mind that personally.
So in regard to the policy, as it pertains to Halloween, does anybody want to make a motion to pass the delegation of authority resolution?
I'd say why we can't just set it earlier.
And we can.
Leave it, leave it to council.
Leave it the way it is, yeah.
Okay, so you should motion.
And we have to set hour. Do what?
Need to motion.
If we're gonna leave it the way it is and has historically been, with council making a decision each year, we just need that indicated and a motion as to what time trick or treating will be this year.
I make a motion, otherwise she just.
You need to say it.
I make a motion, the council will designate trick or treating time every year.
Second.
Do we need to put a time to that for this year?
Yeah, let's, let's tag it together, and that this year trick or treating will be.
Six to eight.
Second.
So we have a motion from Mindy, seconded by Kamal. The council will continue to make the decision regarding trick or treat hours and date, and that this year, trick or treating hours on October thirty-first will be six to eight P M. Is that what you said, Mindy?
That's what I said.
All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, nay.
What'd you say?
Would you say it's
I think it sounds just fine from, coming from you. Okay, so moving on in our agenda. We now need to talk about a proposed floating holiday. And Shirley's gonna talk to us about that, right? Is that right?
Sure.
We'll talk together.
Yeah, that works. So I was looking at the calendar. I noticed that we have the week. Let me, hold on, just a second. I can get the right month.
December.
Yeah, December, we have twenty, the twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth off, which is a Monday and Thursday. Friday, we're back here. Same thing the following week. So I was talking to Megan and she's like, what if we propose a floating holiday? That way you can use that floating holiday the day after Christmas this year. Next year, twenty twenty-six, the day after New Year's Day. So we're not coming back for one day during the week or one day ending the week, whatever. And so it just kind of like snowballed from there. I wanted to talk to Sue about it and then we just came up with two different ideas. So that's what we're proposing to you, either a floating holiday where in like twenty twenty-seven, we could use it after that trans
Yeah, any holiday.
Every day, whatever. If it falls on a Thursday, we could use the, use that as a, the next day as a floating holiday. Make sense? Yeah, okay.
What does the staff want?
I, what you guys decide.
I know.
I mean, this
Generally
That, that's pretty much what she just said. That's when the staff wants to come off.
The floating holiday? Okay. Is it, I, I, I see the floating holiday as one, one day.
That's all you're asking for, just one?
Yep.
One day a year.
One day a year. One day a year. Yep. So it'd be a flip, like, we could, so like, just say, say we had it this year, right, for two thousand twenty-five.
Yeah.
And holidays, the Christmas holidays just fell normal. It was whatever, right? We could've used it Monday as a, on Columbus Day, because everywhere else in the state was closed, right?
That's not a holiday.
We don't remember that as a holiday.
We do that. No.
Really?
We just thought they had too many days off anyway.
I was gonna suggest they could just take a P T O.
They could.
We could.
But one, one floating holiday is, I don't think it's gonna
I think two, I mean, I, I was gonna say just like ask for two. I, I mean, like, I would go for two because like
A social worker over there.
Yeah.
Worked like that.
I, I think we should start with one and see how it works out. One day a year.
So when would you establish one day it would be?
Well, we, so if you guys did choose to allow us to have that floating holiday, we would amend the personnel policy right on the very next agenda item to add that floating holiday in there, giving the clerk the, I guess, freedom or whatever it says to make that decision and announce what day that will be. So I would look at the calendar every year and announce what day that floating holiday would be.
Okay, so
To not disrupt any business that's happening in the city. So we wouldn't do it so anything's disrupted.
Yeah.
What about wintertime? D B W has also
And they do that anyway, even if
I know, even if it's a holiday, but I know there's
And this would be treated just like any other holiday.
Because they get provisions for a holiday. They're working Christmas Day and I, I get that, so it'd be the same. So if you decree this year, December twenty-sixth is their floating holiday.
Yes.
And it snows.
Yes.
So the D B W workers would get that holiday pay for that day.
Yeah.
Okay. Be with it.
Right.
Yeah, it would be treated just like Christmas snowing and they had to come in and New Year's Day.
Right. And it's not costing the city any extra because we're already, we'd be here. We're either working or we're not, right? So
No, I, I, I understand how Pete did. I work for somebody who thinks he gives us P T Os, but then questions why we use them. So I get it.
Yeah, you sound like my dad.
I get this to you because I'm required to. But then why are you using them?
So, so that was the proposal. And then I just wrote another one in case that wasn't something you wanted to do and it would be just giving us a Friday, the two Fridays in a row off.
I assume you'll spend, if we go for the floating holiday, you'd probably spend a twenty twenty-six floating holiday for January seventh.
So it would already be gone. So it would be two weeks in a, yeah. So there wouldn't be another one for the rest of that. Until twenty twenty-seven. Yep. And I think like, I looked at that and it's hard to know right now, I guess. Would that could be, but I
It could be a floating holiday on the day, the Friday before Memorial Day. Or it could be related to Labor Day.
Yeah.
You know, somehow either Tuesday or Friday before.
Could some people use their floating holiday at a different date or only what is set?
No, just what it said, I think.
I think it has to be
I'm just trying to make sure I understand in my head exactly.
Yep, it should be like, if we have Christmas off and we have New Year's off and we have Fourth of July off, that needs to be considered that day that we, we say that it's
But each individual could not choose their own floating holiday. It has to be employee, city employee, why
Whatever, you can set it January first or whatever you want for the following year or whatever date you wanna pick to set both for the following year. And then everyone has to accommodate or accept that.
Take it.
And I think it would be good if when we're approaching twenty twenty-seven or you're looking at what day that should be in twenty twenty-seven, if you make it at least a few months ahead of time, bring it to council and let them know. Because then it's on the camera, it's on the website, it's
Yeah, I usually
public knowledge so that people, you know, don't
Right.
come in expecting to pay their bill and
I think it's insane that we're expecting people to work on the second of January or, or like Christmas and Christmas Day and Christmas. I, I, I think it's ridiculous.
We, we don't work on Christmas Eve or Christmas Day.
The day after Christmas.
The day after. The day after, yeah.
It's, it's just like a, like a
Also, after the day of work.
I, I think it's, I think it's ridiculous. Yeah, it's all right.
I've worked a few days, a few times on Christmas. We, lots of times on New Year's Day.
So when I used to work like the second, that is, that is considered an extra day and we are getting a paid day and a half. So like, I'm okay with giving them the second off. I don't think that's a high request, a high demand, but I'm okay with it.
Do you wanna make it in the form of a motion?
I would love to.
Okay.
But only one day?
Yep, one day.
I move that we accept and adopt the following resolution. Resolution to establish a floating holiday. Whereas the city of Perry recognizes the need for flexibility in the holiday schedule for employees. And whereas the personnel policy will be amended to allow for one floating holiday to be designated annually. Whereas the floating holiday must be scheduled in such a way as to minimize disruption to the city, to the operations of the city of Perry. And whereas it is the best interest of the city council to designate the authority to designate the float, floating holiday to the city clerk for the purpose of efficient administration. Now, therefore, be it resolved, the city clerk is hereby authorized and directed to designate the date of the floating holiday. The clerk, the clerk shall provide reasonable notice of the selected floating holiday to all employees. This resolution shall be active immediately upon its adoption.
Like if, before the second comes in, could we make an addition in there? Kamal, would you be okay if we said, the clerk shall provide reasonable notice of the selected floating holiday to all employees and city council?
Absolutely. And now there, I'm gonna reread it. Now therefore be it resolved, the city clerk is hereby authorized to, and directed to designate the date of the floating holiday. The city, the clerk shall provide reasonable notice for the selected floating holiday to all employees and to city council. This resolution shall be effective immediately upon its adoption.
Second.
We have a motion from Kamal, a second from Larry and Bob.
Oh, we have to pick one.
We'll go with Larry. Everyone's in favor. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes.
Thank you.
You're gonna go with three, so whether it will be how, when the floating holiday will be through twenty-five and twenty-six?
So I always, in November, give the schedule for the holidays. So that's when we'll, we'll do it with like the normal like days off schedule. So that will be included in there. So you guys will all know and I'll make sure. Just like always, that's how I'll announce it to you.
Should we remind people to do their R S V Ps for the dinner right now? Because I'm thinking about that.
I'll write it down.
Okay.
But then now we need to do the next.
Our final new business agenda item, number five. Possible amendment to our personnel policy, which relates to the, the event that just took place, the resolution.
The floating holiday.
So this would be to add an amendment to the personnel policy concerning the, the floating holiday.
I move that we approve the following amendment to the personnel policy for the city of Perry. This includes employees that are covered by a master contract, which is negotiated with a recognition, a recognized union and a labor group with the understanding this policy will be effective October sixteen, twenty twenty-five. H, holiday. Number one, the following holidays are recognized as paid holidays for all full-time employees. New Year's Day, Good Friday, President's Day, Memorial Day, July fourth, Labor Day, Veterans' Day, Thanksgiving's Day, Friday after Thanksgiving, Christmas Eve, Christmas Day, New Year's Eve. If those holidays fall on a Saturday, it will be celebrated on the preceding Friday or on a Sunday, then the following Monday. Two, one floating holiday will be designated annually. The floating holiday must be selected in such a way to minimize disruptions to the operation of the city of Perry. The city clerk will designate the floating holiday and give reasonable notice to the staff and city council.
Okay, good. We'll add that.
If an hourly employee is required to work on a payday, he or she shall receive compensation at one and a half times his or her normal hourly rate and paid holiday.
Second, following thing, instead of, he says it's scheduled instead of, you said, I can't remember the word now. It wasn't scheduled. I missed it.
Yeah.
That's okay. Not a big deal.
To
Must be scheduled is what it's read, but you heard it written, but you, I, you did it. I can't remember the word you used.
It's okay. Selected. Selected. That was, thank you.
Oh. Not a big deal.
To, to use the words in the
Do you want me to use it?
No, it's okay. We can, Shirley can make that.
But I just wanted, because it's written and don't want someone to say, like, you didn't read it exactly how it said.
The intentions are there.
Oh, wait here.
Oh.
Somebody wants you to snap your hands, Paul.
So we have a motion from Kamal, seconded by Bob. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. So that completes our new business items. Is there any other business to come before council at this time? Trax, did you have anything you wanted to say?
No, I feel good. I know that she's actually going to a meeting on Thursday.
Kristen, this is Shirley's Alrighty then.
I know where you can get a cheap G P S monitor for the car.
Any other discussion, council, or any observations you'd like to make at this time?
I would just recommend or remind everyone that we set the hours for Halloween. Please drive carefully. Watch the children walking through the streets. Little ones should wear reflective something on their body.
Or have those light up things that they carry around.
Something, whatever.
I, I very much appreciate some of the businesses have put out, put out some really huge decorations on the sidewalks and stuff and
I
Very nice.
Yes.
I actually have a big thank you for the police in the park. And they did a fantastic job. So there, there was a fire ban. Fire ban? Yeah, maybe? And we really didn't know and before starting a fire, we wanted to make sure. And I asked the police officer, he wasn't sure. And he was like, you know what? I'll find out. And he went. And he got the hours and he came and he's like, you're good. You can have your own. It was outside, but he, he really went the extra mile and I really appreciated it.
Wonderful.
We were on a run on the road. We were just running.
And I saw our police chief provide a service to the middle school kids who were in the bicycle riding club and Mr. Rockefeller was their teacher. And during the day, so Mr. Rockefeller would contact Kyle when they were ready to cross F fifty-two. Kyle would, and when traffic cleared, pull his car out there and turn on his lights. The kids would cross Main Street. Then they rode around the lakes. There was about twenty of them. And then when they were ready to go back across, he'd text him again and he'd come down and pulled up traffic and they'd cross back over to go back to the school. So I thought that was really nice.
Very nice.
Yeah. Very nice of them to do that. I will let you know that there's going to be a groundbreaking ceremony for Laff Cube on the twenty-third of this month at eleven thirty.
For what? Laff Cube?
Mm-hmm. They are going to be building a
A T M, yes.
A T M, but it also will have video people for doing banking, drive-up banking.
Okay.
So the, the drive-up banking will only be during the hours where there are people working, like typical eight to five hours or whatever those are. But the A T M will be available to drive up to twenty-four hours, seven days a week. And that will be in the site on Lansing Road
Next to Family Dollar.
Next to Family Dollar. There we go. I couldn't remember.
People were speculating about that.
Oh, I'm sorry. It's the twenty-fourth, Friday, the twenty-fourth at eleven A M. A groundbreaking. So if you're available to come, I think that would be a nice way to let them know that we appreciate their business.
They've got the Like a seven or seven and a half acre parcel that came to planning commission. And they're putting in a dual lane, like Sue indicated, A T M and then the interactive booths. There won't be any live people there.
Just video.
Video.
A I.
Is there anything else that would be interesting? Is there anything else that we were gonna mention tonight, announcement wise? We talked about the parade. We talked about the groundbreaking, Halloween. I think we're good.
Yeah, we're good.
And since there are no other council discussion, observations, or public comment, I will adjourn our meeting at eight.
Oh, we'll have agenda items for
I'm sorry. Do we have any agenda items for our next meeting?
The table, the item that we Other than the tower.
Right, right, the tower, okay. I'll have the North Street. We'll place more information on that.
And then if we've heard back from Justin on the ordinance proposal, what
I sent it today, both of them. So I haven't heard back from them yet.
I wouldn't expect either back from them yet. They're in the works. If they're back and they're okay, we'll have those.
Yeah, we'll have first readings. We'll also have a motion to cancel the council meeting that's on New Year's Day, January first.
Um, we'll also have a motion to cancel the council meeting that's on New Year's Day, January first. And then I'll have the, our M M L insurance renewal quote that I got just earlier this week, so.
So January first, which is
A Thursday.
A Thursday. We'll vote next time to cancel the council meeting.
Sure.
Okay. And then you said, what insurance was what?
The M M L renewal. It will be due December first, so we want to do that before the meeting.
All right. Anything else, anybody else wants to have on the agenda? No? Okay, then.
Did you say about the R S V Ps for the party, you were going to mention something?
Yeah.
Yes.
We can do that. Do we have the vacuum or?
The employee appreciation dinner. Please let Shirley know your R S V P. So we'll have a reminder and R S V P. Thank you, Des. Anything else? No, no? Okay, at eight, eleven, meeting adjourned.
Thank you.